Is being delivered at some point.
Oh.
They're only giving fifteen minutes. Heads up.
Good morning, I've got nine o'clock. I'm gonna call to order. All members are present. Hear from the public. I don't see any public to be heard from, hear from the public. Alright. First selectmen's briefing, the Millings. As you may have noticed, are in at the transfer station and. Being spread. We're also gonna be taking care of the numerous potholes and that that are up there. The tank has been removed. The last picture I took of it was on Sunday. They got it up out of the ground and loaded on a. Flatbed and then they found that the.
I lost my picture myself.
You did, you better go out and come back in.
They found worse?
They, they, they found that the, they couldn't clear the wires. I don't know if you folks have noticed the thing up there, it looks like a submarine, I mean, it's huge. So anyway, when I went back up there. Everybody had gone, but they had taken the. The old tank off of the truck, put it in the yard again, and they were waiting to get a couple of. Permits or whatever, so.
Was it, was it assessed to see if it leaked?
I, I have not talked, I was gonna talk to our billing department this morning. But who were there? I did talk to the contractor and two of their representatives, and they said. It was perfect, it looked like. It had just been installed, there was no indication of any. Contamination whatsoever, and the. I'll tell you the truth, the tank looked brand new. Surprising as old as it is, but. And it's a double wall fiberglass. You know, we're taking it out because it's a state requirement to do it. I've had people tell me it probably will last another twenty years, but. Better safe than sorry. My understanding is the new tank is scheduled to be delivered on Friday. So that project is moving along. Somewhat on schedule and everything so far, although we shouldn't say anything, seems to be going rather smooth, other than. Tank is larger and higher than we anticipated.
If I recall, we get a rebate on this.
A rebate.
Rebate being.
Was that a rebate?
Funding, state funding? I can't remember.
Yes, yes, it wasn't a rebate, but it was. We do have matching grants coming in, I think it was.
Very good.
I wanna say sixty-five percent, I don't remember, I know. The Board of Ed contributed one hundred and thirty-five thousand, our capital improvement. Contributed one hundred and thirty-five thousand, and it seems we're. At the moment, of course, we're gonna have to be doing repaving and everything of the playground. That area. But apparently, from what I'm being advised, we're working well within the budget. So, so far, so good.
When the. When those grants. Come back to us. How do they get divvied up, since the school put up, puts part of the money and the town put up the rest?
We're gonna have to, it came out of their one percent fund. We're gonna have to discuss that with the Board of Finance. As I recall, when we. Determine that, there was no particulars of that mentioned, but. Certainly something to be given some consideration.
Yeah, that's too bad, okay, thank you.
Alright, item five, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of July third.
So moved, they really, really nice job done on those minutes.
Seconded.
There's, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. No corrections or additions, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Hear from boards, commissions, and committees. Jim Revitzky stopped in to see, see me. Yesterday and. Wanted to know if they could go ahead with the project. And start trying to complete the restoration of the headstones. At South Cemetery. I guess they've caught up on what they were backlog on. And I asked him just to hold off on that a little while until we hear. We have yet to get the letter from Kerma that they've promised us. Regarding their stance on those headstones. I have talked to town council, and I said, as soon as we get that letter. I will forward that to them, but. We're gonna give them a reminder this week that we haven't received the letter, they did say it would probably be two weeks, but.
Do we know who the owner of those tombstone, those stones are?
The, oh, the ones they wanna repair, I didn't get a specific list of the. Tombstones, he just said he'd like to complete it from one end of the cemetery to the other, and I said. I believe it's gonna be a little more complicated than that, so. I think the key is to, let's see what Kerma has to say in that letter. Let, let town council take a look at it, I know. Chris has done some statutory research. And working with Sherry much, so. Everything is kinda keyed on that letter and where we go from there. Alright. Old business, status of the Ashford School program, I thought the meeting went well yesterday. And we will be scheduling another one for the same time next Monday. I'll be sending out invitations on that. Other than that, it's pretty much status quo. I know. Catherine, you had said you were missing one of the job descriptions, and I think Cindy. Forwarded all three together yesterday to all of us. Again. So.
So the next item on our agenda, we already took care of. Last time.
The recommended, yes, and that, it has not gone out, cuz there's just some final tweaking done, but we're ready to get that. That will certainly go on the. In the. Process of getting that publicized and everything this week sometime. And I, I thank the school and Cindy for working, well, everybody in a cooperative nature on that. Item C, consider funding options relating to the initiation of the Ashford. We are not there yet, I'll keep you posted as we, but we. I think it's important we carry it on our agenda, just so it's. On our.
I'm, I'm curious, I'm curious, is this a. Is it that we're looking at the funding options, or that the Board of Finance should be looking at the funding options?
Well, we don't know, the, the Board of Finance will ultimately be making the decision. But we don't, the, the, the question mark is, we're not sure. And I know we've gone over this several times, but there are three basic options. But the dollar amount, once we can determine that and get a consensus of mine, is going, I think, have a big. Impact of what we're talking about in our method of doing it. My, my general thought, if it's a hundred thousand or less. We would consider doing a self-financing, I think that's the recommendation from. Our finance advisor. If it's more than that, I know Chris had talked with the Friar Group. And they were talking that potentially could be a million dollars, well, if it's a million dollars. Was upfront money, then I think we have to do some interim bonding, and there are costs associated. With that, but. Answer directly, Catherine, ultimately, that decision. Needs to be made by the Board of Finance, and I've been keeping them updated on that.
Okay, so we won't know the answer to this in terms of how much money is really involved, until after the architect. Completes. Their work.
That is the impression I have, yes.
Because we've been carrying this on our agenda for a long time now.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, item D. Ashford Citizen. Review draft of establishment of the policies and procedures. Do we wanna proceed with that today or? Carry it?
Why would we carry it at this point?
Just ask the question.
Alright, well, we've put it off for a while now.
Yeah, we carried it for several meetings.
Yeah, and it doesn't look like we have. Heck of a lot on this agenda, so yeah, I think we should probably take a good look at it.
Yeah, we, I haven't seen a copy of policies and procedures come across through the email yet, have they?
What we did have, what we did receive was something from town council, where town council updated what I had drafted. And in a general sense, I thought he did a really nice job. Did you get a copy of that at all?
I don't believe I did.
Okay.
You should have, Chris, did, did we get one to Roger, or we didn't get one to Roger? It was Catherine and I got it.
I don't remember seeing an update from Duncan.
Okay.
Didn't want any, had he had yellow highlights and. He had some omissions, some, some things he had recommended.
So based, based on that, let's do this, if it, if it works for everybody. Is make sure that. Make sure that Roger has full copy. And we can table this until the next meeting. But at that point in time, I think it's really important that we get through this, because. You're certain, we're certainly putting things in place for, if I recall, September first. Correct?
It's certainly been a goal.
Well, we, we know that we're changing the pricing and everything as of September first, so we should have everything in order at that point in time.
Yep. Yep. Alright, we'll carry it to the next meeting and.
Is that which, Roger, does that work for you?
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay, we will carry that, I think I've already mentioned a transfer station update. I've met with Casey. I had a, a, a meeting with Charlie and Tony. Saturday. A lengthy meeting. I understand Sunday, Casey. Also had a meeting with both gentlemen, going over some of our policies. Up there. And we intend on having some more. We are also, one of the things that I've been meeting almost daily with Casey. Going over, there's a number of our signage's that need to be. Either replaced or upgraded up there that have deteriorated. So when we are ordering the signs for the new guard station. I intend on ordering all of them.
I'm more than, I'm more than willing to go out and purchase a. Employees-only sign to put on the guard station. I don't know why there isn't one on there right now.
I'm. When I was up there Saturday, I meant to look at it, but I'm advised by both Casey and Tony and Charlie that there is one on that door.
Apparently, it's not big enough.
But that's one of the things we'll take a look at.
Have you had that discussion?
I've had that discussion, Charlie tells me that. Since he's been working there, there's an open door policy that people are allowed to go in and ask questions. And to see them if they have anything, and. I understand that point, and I said, I believe our intent is. We understand people are gonna have questions, we understand sometimes one of. The gentlemen are working in the back or not available, and somebody's at that desk. Keeping an eye on things, so you have to be available to answer questions, but I say. The intent. Is that any resident or taxpayer in town should not be in that office. For any more than five minutes, ten minutes. At, at, at the longest.
Bill, they shouldn't be in there at all, how hard is it for one of our workers there to get up off their chair? And go to the door and come outside to talk to that person? How hard is that? This problem has gone on for so long. For God's sakes, you know, apparently their open door policy is that someone can come in and plant their rear end in the chair in the corner for as long as they like.
Well. As I mentioned.
Exactly what we have.
As, as I mentioned, and the individual that. Is in question there, I've also had a talk with him and reiterated our policy. And both Casey and I have reiterated that over the weekend with our guys. And said we're gonna have to take measures if it continues. For writing them up. For allowing that. But. That is a part of. Public domain up there, it's, it's public property.
It's a safety issue, there are buttons in there that work the. Some of the much, the mechanics around this.
I, I have talked. A week ago with OSHA about that, because I understand it was said that was a safety. Violation, OSHA tells me it is not. A particular safety issue.
Then I'll talk to OSHA.
You can talk to OSHA, I can, I wrote down the name of the gentleman.
I remember when they came through before. And did an inspection. Okay, and some of the conversations that we had then.
So anyway. It's an ongoing saga, it's being taken advantage of by at least one individual we know of, I've heard. There may be one or two other long-winded sort of folks. Spend more time in there than the five or ten minutes. We've gotta put our foot down and.
There should be no reason, there should be no reason that the workers there. Don't get up from their chair. And go outside to talk to people. I've seen it so many times.
Okay, I'm gonna move on, item F, Ashford Housing Authority. Request for ARPA funded appropriation, I have not got any detail yet back from Jessica. We can carry this on our agenda if we like to, until we get that breakdown. Just haven't heard anything yet. Item G, discuss and or act on ASME. I have not had a chance yesterday to work on. The revisions and, and a draft is something I'll send to. Roger and, and you Catherine. To take a look at following up on our last meeting. About what we are gonna proceeding in. Karen is on vacation until next week, so we will not be scheduling anything until she gets back. But. I'll get something to you, if not today, then tomorrow. New business, consideration of the request from Ace Equipment Sales. I did talk with Joe and Casey. About that, I've. Expressed the board's concern about. Traffic on that road, they remind me that when we logged Kettle Rock or Kettle Rock. Log Kettle Rocks property at that time, they used that road. And Joe doesn't anticipate there being any damage. He actually thinks it may be to our benefit. To have them go in and make some repairs. Before and after they're done. But it's on the schedule for updating of that old. Giant Oak Road. On this coming season. So he seemed to think that it would be a benefit to us to upgrade. Through this private vendor, if they're gonna be doing any improvements, but. What I told him was that I wanted to take a look at, and I thought. What I told him was that I wanted to take a look at, and I thought perhaps members of the board. Want to actually go through and take a look at that bridge and exactly what road they're doing. Um, Casey, between the weather and, and just getting attuned to taking over the position, it's been a little short on time, but. I'll set something up on when I'm going there and I'll let you and Roger know about it. If you want to. Join us just for a walk through of that area, we can do that.
Actually, I'm going to go out on my own. I've already been there before, um, the, uh, I think it's a safety issue to take logging trucks down that little road.
Well.
Pretty close, those homes are pretty close to the road.
We have not given them any, uh. Any answer one way or another yet, but, uh, take a look at it and we'll compare notes and. Um, so you're going to look at it on your own?
Yeah.
Okay.
Roger, if you want to go with me, that'd be great.
I mean, these are just triaxial trucks or they doing semis?
I believe they're tri轴s.
Okay.
I'll try to find, you know, make that question, I don't know, but I, I believe it's tri轴s. All right, item B, Board and Commission Appointments. Um, I don't believe we have any recommendations, Chris, unless you have gotten something since we posted the agenda.
Uh, just a couple of recommendations that committees. Are going to evaluate and possibly recommend.
Okay, but we haven't received anything. Okay, item C, tax refunds. Do we have any?
Nope, we're saving money.
Okay. I believe item D here, review of cemetery statutes. I think we've already discussed that. Agenda items for the upcoming Board of Selectmen's Meetings.
Can we go back to cemeteries for a minute? I pulled some stuff off the D E C website yesterday. About the neglected cemetery fund. And the process you have to go through to. Do restoration. So I'm going to, I'll copy it and put it in your boxes. And you can take a look at that and I think. The three steps that they outlined to be eligible to do work. I think it's kind of self-explanatory and maybe we'll clear up some of the questions.
Can you make a copy for Sherry Butch and for Jim as well? Since we're the cemetery committee?
Yep. I will.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda items for, uh. Any of our future meetings?
Uh, I want to know, I want to know, um, how much ARPA funding, um, we have that is not. Uh, earmarked by this board collectively for, um. For use, so that we know how much we're working with. Apparently, you know, you mentioned that it. Could be a hundred and seventy-five thousand, it could be three hundred thousand. So we need to have a good accounting. We're going to run out of time this year. Um, earmarking what we need to do, you know, our plan for the use of the rest of it. If we don't get going on it, and there's some other, other things that have come up that I'd like to bring forth as potential. Uh, use of our resource, uh, resources.
Just for clear, I, I, I received an accounting earlier in the year that we had a hundred and seventy-nine available. Chris has done an adjustment gone through and came up around three hundred thousand. I know Chris and, and Laura and Sherry. Are going to get together and try to reconcile that, so I agree, we're, uh. You know, we've been doing year end down at the, uh, finance office and it's been a little busy down there, but. Uh, we need those figures sooner rather than later, so we'll stay on that. Hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have a report on that.
I would expect that the information is in the system.
Oh, I believe it is.
Okay, good. Uh, also, I'd just like to say.
It has to be.
Yeah, I know. Um, I have, by the way, just in passing, um, I had a very good meeting with Sherry. Uh, going through, uh, learning more about the system. More, more about what she encountered, you know, and continues to encounter and trying to. Understand why things were set up the, the way that they were so that she can work with it and it was a, a really, really good and informative meeting.
Good, good, I'm glad that happened. Um, Chris just reminded me, and Chris, we don't have a date on this. But we like to add something to the agenda, um, regarding the Nipmunk Trail Marathon Approval.
Uh, I make a motion that we add the Nipmunk. Trail run.
On approval.
Uh, to the, uh, agenda.
On day October first.
Fair the motion of adding this to the agenda, sing and f by saying aye? All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve. Uh, provided all insurance forms are filed appropriately. The Nipmunk Trail Marathon Approval for October first, you said, Chris?
Yep.
Okay, Chris, do I remember the inquiry? I know last year. We asked them to park on just one side of the road. And if I remember what I read, listen, confusing it with one of our other, uh. Uh, trail bike, uh, things or something, they were asking to actually park on the opposite side of the road?
I gave David the contact. Um, talked to Paul. So I guess they'll decide between the two of them, which side of the road they're going to use.
You gave David Tebow the, the information?
Oh, Dave Merkett, the guy from the Nipmunk Marathon.
Okay.
Will we be providing some cones for them or something to help? Uh, delineate where they, the parking is or, you know, just from a safety perspective?
I will follow up with Paul and make sure that those two have talked. I know, I know last year, I believe the fire department provided cones and that, but, uh. We'll follow up on that. We've got a little time to work on that, but I want to make sure that is coordinated with the fire department. Cause it was their request. They were concerned, couple of years it was parking on both sides of the road. If they had to go through there with any of their major equipment, whether they could get through there or not.
We have had to, I had to carry a, carry a person off that hill.
Okay, so Roger had some firsthand experience with that, also. Okay, all in favor of approving, um. The Nipmunk Trail Marathon for October first, sing and f by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, I've got nine twenty-five.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor, sing and f by saying aye, all right?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Uh, Roger, I'll reach out to you for going over to that road. Thanks.
Uh, why don't we like do a trifecta? Maybe do that, do the, do the Baker House and then maybe go up to the Academy.
All right, if you want to do the three of us, yeah. Um, but I don't know what Bill's schedule is. I know yours is maybe a little more open.
Yep.
Bill?
I'm open to set up a date. Usually Saturday mornings are good for me if we want to do a Saturday morning.
Yep.
Bear with me a second, Jeff, what do I have on Saturday morning?
This Saturday may be a little tough for me.
All right, let, let's aim for the following Saturday.
Okay.
And check your schedules and just make sure you're open then, and we do, we'd meet at like nine o'clock.
Sounds good.
Nine o'clock, eight o'clock, whatever you want.
Nine o'clock?
Oh, eight o'clock at the Wooden Spoon, have breakfast.
All right, so what is our time?
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Let's say nine o'clock, uh, meet at the Trump House.
Yeah, bring your coffee, thanks.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
Trifecta, Saturday, nine o'clock. I'm giving them shit about the, uh. Whoa.
What?
This road, they want to do logging. They, I, they've done it before, but these are tri轴s, you know? And just get out of here.